This meeting of the Aurora City Council for July 22, 2025 is hereby called to order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Barrero.
Here.
Alderwoman Garza.
Here.
Alderman Masiacos.
Present.
Alderman Nunez.
Here.
Alderman Franco.
Here.
Alderman Seville.
Here.
Alderman Benwebos.
Here.
Alderwoman Smith. Alderman Bug.
Here.
Alderwoman Bade.
Here.
Alderman Larson.
Here.
Alderman White.
Here.
Mayor Lash is present.
Is there a motion to approve the appointment of the sergeant-at-arms?
So moved.
For this meeting, motion was made by Alderwoman Smith, seconded by Alderwoman Garza. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? This motion carries by voice vote. Are there any aldermen who'd like to lead us in the pledge of allegiance for tonight? Alderman Franco, thank you for volunteering. Thank you. Jonathan, would you like to give us the mayor's report?
Absolutely, thank you so much, mayor. It is a joyous occasion here tonight at city council. Appreciate everybody coming out. Our video production team here at the city of Aurora has not won just one, not just two or three, but five tele-awards. Let's give them a round of applause. Tele-awards are a national award. Our team competed against private sector companies, other government agencies, nonprofits, and they walked away with five awards here tonight. So we're going to show you a reel of some of the clips of the videos that ended up winning awards, and then we're going to have Mayor John Lash come down as well to present mayor's awards of excellence to each of the team members. So let's take a look at the video and look at all the great work that they've done here last year into this year as well. Again, give it up for this video production team here at the city of Aurora. The champs are here. Mayor, we'll have you come down, we'll have the team come up. They have their tele-award trophies in hand, and we'll have the mayor present each of them with the mayor's award of excellence. We'll have the mayor speak for a second, and also our video production manager who leads the team, Matt Winters.
Come on up, Matt. You each get one, and they all say the same thing. So Matt Winters, for earning an impressive five tele-awards on behalf of the city of Aurora and for your service as a member of one of the most talented, creative, and innovative video production teams across the country, thank you so much. Alex made it to the team. Luke Hettendorf, for earning an impressive five tele-awards on behalf of the city of Aurora and for your service as a member of one of the most talented, creative, and innovative video production teams across the country, thank you so much, presented this mayor's board of excellence. Franco Ochnoa, for earning an impressive five tele-awards on behalf of the city of Aurora and for your service as a member of one of the most talented, creative, and innovative video production teams across the country. And Dennis Healy, for earning, I know you probably don't know what's coming next, an impressive five tele-awards on behalf of the city of Aurora and for your service as a member of one of the most talented, creative, and innovative video production teams across the country. Congratulations, sir. And Alex Jones, a guy who's always working late in the office, for earning an impressive five tele-awards on behalf of the city of Aurora and for your service as a member of one of the most talented, creative, and innovative video production teams across the country. Thanks for...
Give it up for the video production team here at the city of Aurora.
Just want to say, so the council's aware and the public's aware that one of the new tasks that this creative, innovative team is going to be doing is working hard to promote a lot of our small businesses in downtown Aurora that are also working on with the convention and visitors bureau to produce a promotional video for our entire city to draw more people to our downtown, a lot of the great services that we have, and really appreciate all of your professionalism. It's high-level TV-quality work, and just want to say thanks for all that you give to the city of Aurora. Matt, do you want to say a few words?
Sure.
I'm going to hold your hardware. Here, I'll throw it on this.
I just want to say that I love my job. I get to promote an awesome city, the local businesses, the non-for-profits, support the community through ACTV, and I get to work with some of my favorite people in the entire world. I'm very blessed and proud to manage such a fun, creative, hard-working group. Tony Martinez, our chief, has really done a great job of giving us the perfect amount of guidance and creative freedom, and created a fantastic culture where we all get to work together through the different divisions of communications. The whole department helps brainstorm ideal, helps brainstorm ideals for the, some of the videos we make, and some of those videos won some of these tellies. And further, you know, the communications division, you know, John over there, you know, he helps write scripts, or his team helps write the scripts. They're on-air talent for us. Even branded marketing, they'll get behind the camera and, you know, assist us on some of the larger shoots. So my point is, as much as these guys really deserve this award, so does the whole communications department. So I just want to say thank you to everyone in comms and the administration, and I can't wait to see what we do next, so.
Let's get a group picture. Congratulations again to our video production division. And just an FYI for those of you watching at home, the city has not won a tele-award since 2009. They took home five in one year. That's very impressive. So they're going to go up now and, you know, run the broadcasts like they should be doing, back to work, guys. Congratulations again to an amazingly talented team. So glad that they're here with us in the city of Aurora. Couple of other news and notes to highlight. The summer food truck festival was an amazing success. We estimated about 5,000 to 6,000 people, came out last week. It was a great event, so many different food trucks, a variety of food options, and I could say right now we're looking forward to the fall one, which is just around the corner in September. So if you missed this one, you have a chance to get some more and be a part of the action coming up in September. Two other events we'd like to highlight before we wrap up the mayor's report. Keep in mind that the Aurora Farmers Market is continuing. The West Plaza Market is going to be taking place tomorrow inside of West Plaza on the west side, so if you're looking for a little bit of a condensed version of the Saturday market, you could still go there every Wednesday through mid-August, get some great food, produce, et cetera. And then obviously, the oldest market in the state of Illinois continues every Saturday. The vendor list is up on the screen. If you want more information, you could follow them on Facebook, also check our website. Again, Felicia Frytag and the Community Events Division does a great job each week at curating phenomenal vendors to come out, provide fresh produce from farm straight to table. And finally, we have the community listening in Action Town Halls. They begin this Saturday, so four straight Saturdays. Mayor Lash and his team are going to be out and about in the community covering all 10 wards to get feedback from the community on what things need to be looking like moving forward and what things the city can do to help best serve the community. So feedback is welcome, and it is certainly going to be a good thing, so we hope that everybody could make it out. You could sign up online. If you've missed anything, again, follow us on social media. We're going to be blasting it out there for sure before the opening date. So lots going on, as always, here in Aurora, and appreciate everybody being here tonight to hear the report. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Okay, next section, public comment. Madam Clerk, do we have any members of the public wishing to offer public comment?
We do, Ms. Mayor.
And will you please read the rules of public comment?
Pursuant to the Open Meetings Act, all persons shall be permitted an opportunity to address public officials under the rules established and recorded by the council. Under our rules, any person may address the city council for up to three minutes with a maximum of 30 minutes allotted for all public comment. No person other than the timekeeper or the chair for the purpose of maintaining order may interrupt a person recognized for a public comment during his or her comments. Members of the city council shall not engage with nor respond to a speaker during the time set aside for public comment. Staff is directed to follow up with members of the public with respect to any concerns raised during public comment within the scope of the city's authority following the adjournment of this meeting.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Will you please read the name of the first person wishing to offer public comment?
Andrea Rios-McMillan.
Good evening, city council members.
Welcome, Miss Rios, you have three minutes beginning now.
I'm a lifelong resident of Aurora, an executive producer, director of video at GTA. This was just a coincidence. I love seeing industry folk get awards. I do host a local podcast focused on community voices and currently serve on two advisory boards. Tonight, I'm here on behalf of the city of Aurora's civilian review board, where I proudly served for the past three and a half years. With the recent transition into city leadership, our board remains committed to its mission, but this is a pivotal moment. We're asking for your support to move forward with greater impact and effectiveness. Specifically, we ask for open collaboration and ongoing engagement from both city and police leadership. Your insight is essential as we review policies, make recommendations, and work toward building transparency, trust, and community safety. Your presence at our meetings would send a strong message, not just to us, but to the residents we all serve. Lastly, we need your help recruiting and appointing new board members to fill current vacancies. A fully staffed and diverse board ensures stronger representation and shared responsibility. We invite you to attend our next meeting on August 21 and look forward to working together to strengthen our city. Thank you for your time and your continued commitment to the people of Aurora. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rios. Madam Clerk, are there any other members of the public wishing to offer public comment?
There are.
Could you please read their names?
The next and final speaker is Rick Lawrence.
Good evening.
Welcome, Mr. Lawrence, you have three minutes beginning now.
Thank you. Grocery tax. Last week, Carl told you that Naperville passed it. It wasn't true. Naperville's looking at it. In fact, looking at the list today, about 80% of the municipalities in the state have not passed the tax. The mayor of Elgin came out against it because it's a regressive tax. Now, you can say Naperville's looking at another sales tax. You know why Naperville looks at another sales tax? Because a huge portion of that are paid for by out-of-city residents. Naperville, with all of their car dealers, with all of their restaurants, with all of their stores, they have a huge influx of outside people coming in to buy there. So the tax is largely paid by outside residents that don't require the service. The grocery tax impacts the residents that live here. Just like everything else, the property tax you raise impacts the residents that live here. The water rates that you raise impact the residents that live here. Everything that we seem to do in this city impact the cost to the residents that live here, where other cities rely on outside taxes coming in to pay their bills. It's why Naperville, you know, their property tax, their portion of the property tax is four to five times lower than ours, because they depend on their corporate tax and their business tax to offset the cost to the residents. We cannot just continue to go back to the residents. The grocery tax is a perfect example. You're hurting the middle-to-low-income families more than you're doing anything else. If you can't survive on a half, losing a half of 1% of your budget, there's something wrong. Finance can't even tell you what it's for. You know, they told you didn't, the VNA wasn't even budgeted, but all of a sudden we found money for the VNA. It's oversitting in some pile somewhere. But any businessperson, I don't know how many of you run business, if my business was changed by a half of 1% in a year, a half of 1% would not impact us at all. And if it impacts you, there's something wrong. Maybe you need new finance people, because that's not true. You can survive without a half of 1%. John, you ran on all those expenditures and pay-to-play and all this other stuff. You got to tell me, a half of 1%? You guys can figure that out without impacting the lower-to-middle-income families on your grocery tax. Carl will tell you, it's just a dollar. Well, it's just a dollar to Carl. You know, he loves tax.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. Three minutes expired. Okay, if there are no more speakers, the next section is going to be the public hearing. Agenda item 250577, public hearing, as required by Section 147F of the Internal Revenue Code 1986, also known as the code, related to the issuance of the city of Aurora and Kane, DuPage, Will, and Kendall Counties, Illinois, adjustable-rate-demand-economic-development-revenue-bonds in one or more series in an aggregation, aggregate principal amount not to exceed $16 million, known as the bonds, and confirming the sale thereof, authorizing the execution and delivery of a loan agreement, trust and indenture bond purchase agreement and related documents, authorizing the distribution of an official statement approving the delivery of a letter of credit, a reimbursement agreement, remarketing agreement, and authorizing certain related matters. The bonds will be issued as qualified 501(c)(3) bonds pursuant to Section 145 of the code. I am Mayor John Lash, city of Aurora. It is now 6:17 PM Central Time on Tuesday, July 22, 2025, and I call this public hearing to order. This is going to get a little long. This is a public hearing being held by the city council of the city of Aurora, Kane, DuPage, Will, and Kendall Counties at the council chambers of the city hall at 44 East Downer Place, Aurora, Illinois, regarding the proposed issuance of the city of Aurora, Kane, DuPage, Will, and Kendall Counties, Illinois, the city of its revenue bonds in one or more series in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $16 million, also known as the bonds. The proceeds of the bonds will be loaned to Aurora University, an Illinois not-for-profit corporation known as the university, and an organization described in Section 501(c)(3) of the code. The bonds will be issued as qualified 501(c)(3) bonds pursuant to Section 145 of the code. The university will apply the proceeds of the bonds together with other available funds to finance or reimburse itself for the construction of a three-story, 45,000-square-foot learning commons, known as the learning commons, that will house the library, career services, study rooms, a cafe, a technology hub, the university archives, and a corporate lounge for employees on the university's main campus, as defined below. The acquisition and installation of certain furniture, fixtures, technology, and equipment at the learning center, repairs and upgrades to certain university structures, including parking lots, garages, and other structural components related to the learning commons, construction repairs and/or upgrades to certain university structures, including but not limited to roofs, parking lots, garages, and other structural components on the university's main campus, and other acquisition, construction, renovation, improvement, and/or equipping of educational, athletic, and/or administrative facilities of the university and related infrastructure on the university's main campus, all in the city of Aurora, Illinois, collectively known as the project. Pay a portion of the interest on the bonds, if deemed necessary or advisable, by the city of, city or the university, and pay certain expenses incurred in connection with the issuance of the bonds, collectively known as financing purposes. The project to be financed or reimbursed with proceeds of the bonds is or will be located at Aurora University campus, known as the main campus, which has a street address commonly known as 347 South Gladstone Avenue, Aurora, Kane County, Illinois, and is bordered generally by Gladstone Avenue on the east, Prairie Street on the south, Evans Lawn Avenue on the west, and Marseille Place on the north. The proceeds of the bonds will be used by the main campus and adjacent properties of 1500, 1501, and 1505 South Lawn Place, 1307, and 1317 Marseille Place, 311 Evans Lawn Avenue, and 245 South Calumet Avenue, Aurora, Kane County, Illinois, used in an integrated operation with the main campus to finance or reimburse the university for certain costs of the project in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $16 million. The public notice of this hearing was published on the city's website on July 11, 2025, and also published in Aurora's Beacon News on July 15, 2025. Does anyone present wish to speak or express their views for or against the proposed issuance of the bonds and the project to be financed with the proceeds of such bonds? Are there any questions or comments from the city council on this agenda item?
Motion to close the public hearing.
I believe the point of order, I believe that the mayor needs to ask three times if there's, he only asked once.
Yep.
Ask three times if there's any one.
Are there, are there any questions from the council? Are there any questions from the public? Are there any other questions from the public or comments or people wishing to make public comment on this agenda item?
Second.
Motion to adjourn the public hearing.
Second.
Okay. Seeing no additional persons wishing to be heard, the opportunity for public comment is now closed. The chair will entertain a motion to close, adjourn the public hearing. Is there a motion? The motion was made by Alderman Franco, seconded by Alderwoman Smith. Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Barrero.
Yes.
Alderwoman Garza.
Yes.
Alderman Masiacos.
Yes.
Alderman Nunez.
Yes.
Alderman Franco.
Yes.
Alderman Seville.
Yes.
Alderman Benwebos.
Yes.
Alderwoman Smith.
Yes.
Alderman Bug.
Yes.
Alderwoman Bade.
Yes.
Alderman Larson.
Yes.
Alderman White.
Yes.
Twelve yes, zero no.
Motion carries. It is now 6:22 PM, July 22, and this hearing is adjourned. Next, we'll hear both the consent agenda and the direct-to-council consent agenda in full. Will the clerk please read both agendas?
250485, a resolution authorizing the execution of a labor agreement between the city of Aurora and the Aurora Supervisors Association from January 1, 2026 through December 31, 2028. 250499, a resolution authorizing the execution of a Phase III construction engineering agreement with HR Green in the not-to-exceed amount of $199,731 for the 2025 citywide resurfacing projects. 250513, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a not-to-exceed agreement for design phase engineering and planning special services with Crawford, Murphy, and Tilly in the amount of $99,900 for the replace airfield signage, wind cones, runway 15 and 27 REILS, and airport rotating beacon construct guard lights at runway 1533 project at the Aurora Municipal Airport. 250524, a resolution authorizing the director of purchasing to award contracts for the citywide mowing bid. 25-013 lists A, B, C, E, -2, F, I, and J to vendors Groundworks, Land Design, and Plainfield, and Berry Landscaping from Lockport, and Apex Landscaping in Hawthorne. 250538, letter of intent to remain a part of the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers study regarding the removal of dams on the Fox River. 250543, an ordinance authorizing the issuance and sale of adjustable-rate-demand-economic-development-revenue-bonds Aurora University in one or more series of the city of Aurora, Kane, DuPage, Will, and Kendall Counties, Illinois, in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $16 million, and confirming the sale thereof, authorizing the execution and delivery of a loan agreement, trust and indenture, bond purchase agreement, and related documents, authorizing the distribution of an official statement approving the delivery of a letter of credit, a reimbursement agreement, and a remarketing agreement, and authorizing certain related matters. 250554, an ordinance amending the Ward 6 budget for fiscal year 2025. 250564, a resolution authorizing the purchase of Cornerstone's On-Demand Public Sector e-Learning subscription in the amount of $106,658.60 from August 15, 2025 to August 15, 2028. 250568, a resolution approving the appointment of Stacy Peterson as chief financial officer and city treasurer. 250569, a resolution approving the appointment of Jason Bauer as director of public works and city engineer. 250570, a resolution approving the appointment of Henry Thompson as superintendent of facilities maintenance. 250567, approval of the minutes of the Tuesday, July 8, 2025 city council meeting. 250580, approval of the closed session meeting minutes of April 15, May 20, May 27, June 2, June 17, and July 8 of 2025. 250583, a resolution approving the reduction number one for 1449 Senior Estate subdivision at 1449 Jericho Circle.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Is there a motion to approve the items on both the direct-to-council and consent agenda? As read, the motion was made by Alderwoman Smith, seconded by Alderwoman Garza. There being no further questions, will the clerk please call the roll on both the consent agenda?
Alderman Barrero.
Yes.
Alderwoman Garza.
Yes.
Alderman Masiacos.
Yes.
Alderman Nunez.
Yes.
Alderman Franco.
Yes.
Alderman Seville.
Yes.
Alderman Benwebos.
Yes.
Alderwoman Smith.
Yes.
Alderman Bug.
Yes.
Alderwoman Bade.
Yes.
Alderman Larson.
Yes.
Alderman White.
Yes.
Twelve yes, zero no.
Motion carries. The consent agenda and the direct-to-council consent agenda are both approved. Moving to unfinished business, will the clerk please read the next?
Mr. Mayor, may I interrupt for just a second? I would ask tonight that for unfinished business, we go out of order the way we normally go, Ward 1 through Ward 10. I would ask that we start with Ward 10, because I think it's sometimes it's not quite fair for the first few voters to see how their colleagues are voting. So I think in the future, I would like to see it moved around anyway, so I would ask tonight that we just go around the horn, if that'd be appropriate. I don't think there's any kind of ordinance that mandates we go this way, and I think it's just a better way of going, to rotate every now and then, so I'd ask tonight that we do that. Mayor?
On the, first, can we read the agenda item, get a motion in a second, and then have discussion, include that item on discussion?
Sure.
Okay. Will the clerk please read the next agenda item?
250502, a resolution authorizing the use of funds not to exceed $455,000 for furniture, fixtures, and equipment for new fire stations 9 and 13.
Is there a motion to approve this resolution?
Say again?
Motion made by Alderman Franco, seconded by Alderwoman Garza. Are there any questions or discussion regarding the resolution? I've heard the comments, and the rest of the council's heard the comments made by Alderman Franco. Any discussion with respect to voting order by other members of the council? Alderman Masiacos.
Thank you, Mayor. Not quite sure I understand. That's been the process we always had. If a mayor is not, if a alderman is not really, or older person is not ready to vote, they could always say pass, and the clerk always comes back to them if you want to hear what the rest of the city council members want to vote too, as well. So I'm not quite sure why we have to add more, more procedures.
Thank you, Mayor. Not quite sure I understand that. It's been the process we always had. If a mayor is not, if an alderman is not really, or alderperson is not ready to vote, they could always say pass, and the clerk always comes back to them if you want to hear what the rest of the city council members want to vote to as well. So I'm not quite sure why we have to add more procedure to what we already have, or modify the procedure that's always been in place, at least for the last 13 years that I've been here.
Any other comments on this issue raised by Alderman Franco?
Mayor Lash?
Alderman Barrero?
Yeah, I just wanted to give a perspective from the school board, District 131. So what they've been doing is having the order change every vote, every item. When I was first on the board, it was, you know, from left to right, and so if you were the first person, you always voted first, same as here, Ward I votes first. The other way, the only thing I would caution you about that is that sometimes you're called, you're not ready, because you're so used to going in order. So that's the downside of jumbling it up. But I just want to share that.
Yep. Yep, I'm familiar with the staggered and changing voting order as called by the clerk. The clerk hasn't been prepared to change the voting order for this evening. I think if this is something that the members of the council feel strongly about, we could probably address it in the RAP committee to change our rules and procedures. But I guess for the evening, I would say let's stick with 1 through 10, and if somebody doesn't feel comfortable voting, wants to hear what their colleagues are going to say or how they're going to vote, they can pass, and we'll continue as scheduled, and certainly appreciate raising this issue for discussion, Alderman Franco. Are there any other questions on the agenda item itself with respect to the furniture, the FFNE for the new fire stations nine and 13? There's been a motion, there's been a second. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Barrero?
Yes.
Alderwoman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Masiacos?
Yes.
Alderman Nunez?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Benuellos?
Yes.
Alderwoman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bug?
Yes.
Alderwoman Bade?
Yes.
Alderman Larson?
Yes.
Alderman White?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Twelve yes, zero no.
Motion carries. The resolution is approved. Will the clerk please read the next agenda item on unfinished business?
250519, an ordinance enacting a municipal grocery retailer's occupation tax and municipal grocery service occupation tax.
So moved.
Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance? Motion made by Alderman Franco. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman White. Are there any questions or discussions regarding this ordinance?
Mayor Lash?
Alderman Barrero?
Yes, I got a copy of the Community Listening and Action Town Hall Agenda, and so Ward I and Ward X is this Saturday, and one of the first parts of the meeting on the agenda is a presentation on the city Aurora's financial health, and so that is something that's going to be shared with the community at these town hall meetings. It seems a little difficult to vote on this item when we're having these town hall meetings and talking about the city's fiscal health. I was wondering if there's any way to delay this until after we have these town hall meetings, which are going to be, you know, the last one is scheduled for August 16, and that would give us some time to get some, you know, share the information with residents and get feedback.
Sure. I'm just curious, certainly, are there any other aldermen that feel the same way? I want to give you just a little bit of perspective on what we're going through just as a city. As you know, there's been a transition at the mayor's seat. Secondly, I want to talk just a little bit about this agenda item and how we got here, because one of the first things that Chris Minnick asked as I walked through the door was how I felt about the grocery tax, knowing that it needed to be addressed by October. And he also presented several other options, including raising the sales tax, which were at not the highest end in the state of Illinois, but regionally, we're up there. That would have generated roughly $6.5 million and would have had roughly the same impact on local residents. We talked about the hotel tax, but the grocery tax is one that we wanted to move forward just because of the timeline. With respect to wanting to rate to hear more from Stacy and our finance department, this is something that I've been asking for as well since I walked through the door. On a timeline level, we needed to get through the audit process, which was due June 30, and Chris did file slightly early on the tiffs, but just a little bit late on the audit itself, but it's much better than it's been in previous years. And then, as you're aware, Ms. Peterson just took the reins from Mr. Minnick and has spent the last week largely in transition for him. So some of the data that we hope to have by the town hall won't be complete. As I understand it, the budget process, which we've entered, involves Ms. Peterson making some early and preliminary numbers and calculations. She made me aware of those. The next process is each division and department head coming in and going through line by line, literally every single line of the budget, and trying to find ways to cut back. The administration's made some unpopular cuts already. We've not backfilled some positions. We have delayed projects, many that are important, and a lot of it is just to simply analyze where we're at financially and to get to the point that we just did. So this is just the perspective of me coming in and taking this office, but also Stacy, who's had to go through a transition herself, although she's adequately prepared to address the budget, just the process and the timeline haven't allowed for concrete numbers to come forward, and she's still working on that. So I can understand wanting to learn more. I guess my biggest concern is that if this is something that the council is going to act on, that we put it in our timeline to act by the deadline in October. So I don't mind giving the council a little bit more time. We're also giving Stacy a little bit more time as well. And I do, if Ms. Peterson's able to come up to the mic real quick.
Mr. Mayor, I do have something to say when it's my turn.
Yep, I'll have you next. Now, I don't think I'm going to ask you just to go through the whole presentation we all saw at the last meeting, but I guess just to the question of what does it look like for you in your office to delay this? When would you need a decision by from the council for to advance on the grocery tax?
Based on the schedule for city council, seeing as how that we have to have it to the state by October 1, just to be, to make sure we have everything to submit, I would say no later than the city council meeting on September 9.
Okay. And Alderwoman Smith?
I'm going to join Alderman Barrero in recommending that we wait. I think September 9 would give us all the time that we need to make this decision. I just do want to say this is not a new tax. This is a tax that has been in place since 1990 that has no pending on how I'm going to vote one way or another, but I think when we're going to put information out there to the public, we need to make sure that it's proper information. This is a tax that has just been handed to us by our governor to decide whether we want to continue it on or stop it, and I think many of us are struggling with that, struggling where this is an opportunity to give the taxpayers a break. Do we take that opportunity? And struggling with the fact that we're going to have a $4.5 million hole where that won't be. So I personally, if I couldn't vote tonight, I don't know where I am with this, so I appreciate the extra time in looking at it, and also looking at our surrounding communities on how they're going to vote, because many of them are struggling as well. So I've been trying to keep up with the surrounding communities.
Alderman Benuellos?
Yes, I would like to second or third motion the same thing that Alderman Barrero and Alderwoman Smith said. I believe we've, we're kind of putting the big burden on the taxpayers. You know, we're increasing their taxes, we're going to increase their water bills. I'd like to look at this a little bit further before we vote on that, because at the moment, I would be a no.
So there hasn't been a formal motion yet. We will entertain a motion to hold this. What I do think would be useful for Stacy, for myself, is to come up with exactly what it is that the council wants to see. I do think that we all want to see some level of where we're at. What, by September 9, do you think we might be able to add? I know we're working on a presentation for the town hall meeting, but what level of detail do you think we might be able to have available by that timeline, understanding all that you're going through with every budget meetings every single day?
Yeah. By September 9, I think we should have a pretty good handle on where we're at in terms of where the budget's at and the overall financial status of the city, because I know we will do a financial update of where we're at in September as well, current for 2025, just to give the council an update on it, and I think we should have a good handle on the budget by September.
Okay, so we would have to probably start a little bit sooner unless legal counsel is, would recommend that we hold the item here at this level and then bring it back in September. We, I would, it would make more sense to me to bring it back early just because you don't want to have this come at the last, the very last, last minute, because sometimes there are new questions that come forward. So we can probably hold it here, but also then, unless you want to think it's better to run it through the?
So if there's no changes to the ordinance, if it's going to be unchanged, then you can table it, we can do it to a date certain, and I would give another week or so, just for grace period, but you can hold it here. If there's going to be some changes to the ordinance, I would recommend, I would recommend it goes through the process again.
Okay.
That's how I would handle that.
Why don't we do this, then, if an alderman wishes to make an amendment to hold the item here, and there's a second, we'll hold it at this level, and then the process will be to make sure that we submit all of our questions to the finance department, to make sure that there's adequate time to prepare a presentation that meets everybody's expectations in advance. Alderman Masiacos?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. One of the questions that was brought up by Alderman Barrero was in regards to understanding our fiscal picture, and I'd just like to, in case nobody's seen their docket for finance, the audit's up for discussion tomorrow, 3 PM here at Council Chambers as well. And I know it's a 324-page document, but I think there's enough time over before the weekend to look at it for the meeting, too, to help on that point. But my question to you, madam, is the question of, we wait till September 9. How, if at all, will it affect you presenting the city budget on time and not be rushed? Because you're going through the budget right now process, correct?
Correct.
And if you don't know if this is approved or disapproved, what happens? How do you adjust? And how much time do you need to adjust if it does get approved, or how are you going to approach it?
Well, we have, in the past, come to a point where, several years ago, we had a budget deficit, and then we asked for decrementals from all of the department divisions, and we processed that in a timely manner to pass the budget on time.
How much time did you allot for decrement discussion?
Um, well, I know we did it right around October. I think it was like, probably like three weeks to a month, maybe, but I'd have to go back and double check, because?
All right, so September 9 gives you that month to come before the finance committee in October to present the budget. That's a yes?
Yes.
All right, thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Masiacos. Any other members of the body? Alderman Bug?
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate Alderman Barrero's sentiments on this subject, and I thank myself and my colleagues. Really, it's a little bit of a bigger picture than just this one tax, and I'm glad we're looking at waiting so our residents can get a full picture. We all know that we have a shortfall from our census numbers, and that basically went into effect in about 2022, and then there was a lag time that we would get money back from the federal government, less than millions of dollars from the census number. Really, in the past two years, I don't think we have fully taken into account that shortfall, not our own doing, the poor census numbers. So because we've been spending like that money was going to be there, but it's not there, millions of dollars, as the mayor said, we are starting to now see what the true shortfall is. You can't spend money as if you have that $5 to $6 million that we had every year prior to those census numbers. So this tax is just a very small piece of the puzzle. We have to make up that money missing from the census, or as you said, we have to do some serious cutting. There's no way to face it any other way. So we have a very daunting task. Hopefully, in the future, we can come to an agreement with the federal government and put our census back on in time, recoup some of those funds from a true population count. But in the meantime, they're putting together this presentation to show the picture, what it looks like to our residents without those funds, and every time we look at something, that's going to have to be taken into account.
I'd just like to add, on top of the federal government discussion, that's another burden and hurdle for this council, is that the federal government now requires for our grants, these are grants that we've already been awarded. We now have to check a box that says to receive that grant money that will comply with all the executive orders of the federal administration, just because of our state laws. We're already losing a half million dollars. That's the only number that I'm aware of for grants going into the police department. Our grants department has done an excellent job through transition, applying and going out for new monies. We won't know about those awards on a lot of them, but they are pursuing it, and I would say that everybody in staff is working hard to cut their budgets. They've been made aware. Although we don't have a clear picture, I think everybody knows that we're in a very serious situation, where we're losing money from the federal level. The state isn't cash flush and is facing filling shortfalls to anticipated Medicaid cuts and other places, and doesn't have any new revenue coming in, and it's not like we do either. So, but I can certainly understand wanting to see a more clear picture of where we're at, and I think we can work to get that, too. What I'm going to suggest is that we probably target trying to get this out a little bit sooner, maybe the information tour, you know, the listening session should be good, and that should provide the council for those who are willing to attend, and then maybe we can put a presentation here and bring this item back. But the reason that I did choose to go with the grocery tax is because, as Alderwoman Smith said, it's not a new tax. It's an existing tax that they've changed the funneling of how it gets appropriated, and the, you know, the sales tax would have put us a little bit above what some of our neighbors are doing, although it looks like Naperville's going a little bit harder. So, Alderman Franco?
So I like Alderman Barrero's suggestion. You did mention another creative way to filling that gap. I would think if we could get a presentation to the council, say, if we don't do this, we could fill that gap with this instead, or whatever creative way or ways we could do that. I think that would be a good idea, too. Give us some flexibility on which way we want to go to fill that $4.5 million gap. There may be a better way, and if there is, bring it forward. If there's not, then we would have to rest on what you say, where our hole is, to fill that hole with the gap, the grocery tax. So I think if we can get a couple options, that might be a good thing, too, if there is one.
And the, is there a timeline on the sales tax? I don't think there's a timeline on that. that. I'm sorry. We have a timeline on the grocery tax of October, of telling the state what we're going to do.
Yeah.
But the home rule tax, we can do at any point, correct?
They still have to have, it's October 1st in order for it to be implemented in Jan, as of January 1. If you miss that deadline, it's April to get July. So it, they do have deadlines for any implementation of a, of a sales tax.
Sales tax or grocery tax? I'm sorry.
Well, the grocery and, like, any...
Okay, both.
Any of the taxes that they would have to implement.
Alderman Smith?
I don't know who would answer this. Is there an option to put an end time, if, let's just say if we chose to go forward with the grocery tax and September 9th, is there an option to say, we're going to do this for two years and relook at it, or, you know, a year and look at it, or is there an option to do that, or is it once you implement it, you, it's there? I mean, the governor stopped it, so perhaps we can't.
We, we can repeal it if we would choose to. I would probably prefer to actually look at it in a couple of years to see if, if you do pass it.
Right.
And not put in the actual ordinance any type of rescission within the ordinance, because that could muddy the waters.
I wasn't suggesting we put a repeal in there. I'm just suggesting that we say that in two years from the time if we choose to go forward with it, that we will take another look at this and decide, do we want to continue on or repeal it at that time? Is that acceptable to do that?
Oh, yeah.
So that's an option. We're talking about options, so we could be looking at that as an option, too. Thank you.
Mayor Lesh?
Alderman Nunez?
I appreciate all my comments from my colleagues and the efforts you're going to be putting into this, though. Appreciate the dialogue so far. But I just wanted to remind everyone that when Governor Pritzker did decide to lift this 1%, it was really to lift the burden off the hardworking families of Illinois. And so as we continue this conversation, I'd just like all of us to think about that, from the governor himself, so.
Thank you, Alderman Nunez. Any other comments, questions, or things you would like to hear in the, in the coming presentation?
My only comment I have is, I agree with the, the Barrero, because we need to hear from people. I already, in these two weeks, I have so many phone calls, so many emails. The people not happy with that, because they feel like they want to have a relief, finally. In January, we want to have a relief. 1% or 1/2% of the semara is taxes, and people, they don't feel comfortable with that. So now, this is the few people, they, I'm saying 20 people, I talked to them, but when you do this tour, so it's, I'm very happy if a lot of people go into these meetings and let us know what is, what they, and we need to know what happened if, in case we not pass. So what is the other options you have to raise funds to the city, to comply with what we need, the services and all that, but we have to find other choices, not just hit everything to our constituents, the people living in Aurora. Right now, in my community, it's a lot of issues. You know that. Besides the grocery taxes or whatever, we have a lot of issues with immigration and raising the prices and everything to renew the, the certificates and everything. So they have a lot of other issues. So I have so many phone calls already. So I think we have to wait to hear from other residents what they think.
All right. And, and just as a point, I mean, you know, the, the consequence of not doing it is going to be very, very deep cuts. I mean, Chris had also put in a decrement list for all of capital projects that weren't absolutely necessary, leading up to the transition. So that's, you know, that's what it's going to look like.
I know.
Not, not just losing capital, but losing significant staff.
We have to make the decision based in our constituents, because I remember when in March, when I knocked on doors for my reelection, that's the first thing the people saying. I, please don't raise taxes and nothing. People not happy with that.
And for the new alderman that didn't vote for the spending that got us here, but for those that did vote for it, there's, we have some responsibility now to, to pay the bills. And, and it's, it's not going to be all tax cuts. There's going to be delays. There's going to be cuts. We're not backfilling a lot of positions. So I guess with that, any other discussion on this item?
Make a motion to hold this matter here at city council until September.
Is there a second?
Second.
Yeah, I was going to say, we need to pick a date certain.
I thought we did September 9th.
Well, but the request was to do it a little bit before September 9th, so that there's not a, in case there's another delay of some sort. So...
I amend my motion to hold it here until August.
Yeah, but you need, if, if you're tabling it, you need to table it to a date certain. You can't just...
26th.
August 26th is fine.
That'd be the last one in August.
Sorry, I was trying to pull up the calendar, but the device is now, and I can't...
Hold on just a second. We, we have an existing motion on the, on the floor, and a second on that. Do we need to ask that, there was an initial motion made by Alderman Bug, it's seconded by Alderman Smith, and your initial motion was for...
September, and then I amended it to August.
You amended your motion, and you are seconding the amended?
I am amending my second to my next second.
All right, you're good. So, so what was the, Alderman Bug, what was the date?
August 26th.
Okay. So, so there's a motion to table this matter until August 26, and Alderman Smith, you have seconded that?
Yes, I have.
Okay. You're ready for a vote, or discussion vote.
All right. Does that give you enough time to, I think we'll have a presentation ready to go around the city anyway, with, with the best budget snapshot we can get?
Yes.
Okay. Will the clerk please call the vote? The motion was made again by Alderman Bug, seconded by Alderman Smith.
Okay. And this is the motion to table? Just as well, we also have an underlying motion to approve in a second that we would need to address at some point. But as far as the vote on the motion to...
The underlying motion is what's being tabled, so that will be what's addressed on August 6th, or August 26th.
So we will continue the motion to approve by Alderman Franco and seconded by Alderman White to the 26th. Alderman Barrero?
Understood.
Yes.
Alderman Smith.
Alderman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Masiacos?
Yes.
Alderman Nunez?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Benuelos?
Yes.
Alderman Smith? Yes. Alderman Bug?
Yes.
Alderman Bade?
Yes.
Alderman Larson?
Yes.
Alderman White?
Yes.
12 yes, 0 no.
Motion carries. This agenda item will be held at this level.
And the next...
Next item on unfinished business?
250552, an ordinance amending Article 44, Section 191 of the municipal code, hotel occupancy tax.
Second.
Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance? The motion was made by Alderman Seville, seconded by Alderman Bug. Are there any questions or discussions regarding this ordinance? There being no further questions, will the clerk please call the roll? Alderman Barrero? I just wanted to mention that the headlines, you know, read that we're doubling this tax, and, you know, it hasn't been raised since it was first adopted. And, you know, I don't view it as doubling, but I view it as catching up to our, to our neighboring communities. And, and this is one of those taxes where it is, the majority of it is paid for by out-of-town residents, not, not Aurora residents. And the benefit with the new casino might, might boost revenue a little bit more. Any other questions or discussion on this agenda item?
Where was that headline? I didn't see it.
Christian's smiling. That would be the Aurora Beacon news, I think. Any other questions on this agenda item? Mayor Lesh? Alderman Nunez?
You know, there were some concerns from some community members that reached out about travelers maybe staying in other towns because of this tax. But as someone that travels weekly for a living across the country, I can tell you that when traveling, most companies are simply looking at the hotel rate and location of where they're traveling, whether it's an office, client, whatever have you. So I don't predict this really impacting any of our hotels' businesses, which is why I'm in favor of this. And as Alderman Barrero mentioned, it is mostly non-residents are going to be paying this, so.
And it catches us up to our neighbors, yes. Any other questions or discussions? Clerk, please. Alderman Bug?
No.
Alderman Masiacos?
Just like to make a comment. You know, I did not vote for this in committee, but maybe I'm looking at this too much from a business perspective, but I'd like to say that I've never known, or I've never heard of or read of, a community that's taxed itself into prosperity, regardless of whether other people pay for it or not in our community. So I will be voting no on this resolution.
Any other questions or discussion? There being none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Barrero?
Yes.
Alderman Garza?
No.
Alderman Masiacos?
No.
Alderman Nunez?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Benuelos?
Yes.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bug?
Yes.
Alderman Bade?
No.
Alderman Larson?
Yes.
Alderman White?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Nine yes, three no.
Motion carries. This ordinance is adopted. Okay. We have no new business for this evening's agenda. The treasurer's report. Can we get Stacy back up here? Sorry, go ahead.
Good evening. I'm Linda Reed, the Comptroller Deputy Treasurer, and I'm here presenting the May Treasurer's Report. Unfortunately, our former boss, Chris, didn't get this presented before he left. But before I talked about that, just Alderman Masiacos mentioned that the audit reports are going to be at the Finance Committee on Thursday. Our audit partner, Jim Savio from Sickage, will be there giving a presentation. So if any of you are interested, that's a great opportunity to learn more about our financial statements. And getting into the Treasurer's Report for May, the results look good. They're on track for what we would expect for the year. The general fund has a net surplus of $13.3 million and a fund balance of $37.8 billion. And looking at the trend, revenues are 36% of budget has been expended, or collected, and 31% of the budget has been expended. So we, looks like we are on track for the budget for the year. Are there any questions?
Any questions from the council? Has, has every member of the council received the audit? Or should I send that over to Rich to take a look at it?
We have, the Legisstar item has all the electronic copies, and we are receiving hard copies tomorrow, and I will deliver those over to the alderman's office, so you'll have a hard copy of the, the main audit book. If you want hard copies of the smaller reports, just let me know, and I'll get you copies. But everything should be in your Legisstar packet.
Perfect. Any questions? Okay. I'd like to acknowledge that the mayor has received the May 2025 Treasurer's Report. The next agenda items is to pay the bills. Agenda item 250591, bills, summary large bills. The motion was made by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman Bug. Are there any questions or discussion on the bills? Okay. There being no further questions, will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Barrero?
Yes.
Alderman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Masiacos?
Yes.
Alderman Nunez?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Benuelos?
Yes.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bug?
Yes.
Alderman Bade?
Yes.
Alderman Larson?
Yes.
Alderman White?
Yes.
12 yes, 0 no.
The bills are approved for payment. We are in need of a closed session pursuant to the following section of the Open Meetings Act, Section 2C 11, to discuss litigation. Do I have a motion to enter into closed session and thereafter adjourn the city council meeting with no further final action or public business to take place for purposes of this meeting?
We, we were given no notice of this meeting.
Motion, motion made, and this came, did come through last minute?
It was last.
It'll be very short.
I just have another meeting to go to. I got about 15 minutes.
Motion was made by Alderman Seville. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Franco. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Barrero?
Yes.
Alderman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Masiacos?
Yes.
Alderman Nunez?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Benuelos?
Yes.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bug?
Yes.
Alderman Bade?
Yes.
Alderman Larson?
Yes.
Alderman White?
Yes.
11 yes, 0 no.
Motion carries. We are entering into executive session. Let's be back by 7:10, and it'll be very short.